Good afternoon. My name is Thomas Helm. I'm the co-founder of Valley Improvement Projects. We're a social and environmental justice grassroots nonprofit here in Modesto and do work around the northern San Joaquin Valley. We are hosting this KPFA Local Station Board election candidate forum for Valley residents because we got a lot of commuters to the Bay Area, folks that listen online. And we are going to let each candidate take 10 minutes to speak. And I'm going to read a quick disclaimer that the views expressed here are those of the candidates, not the radio station or Pacifica Foundation, and that the sponsorship of the debate is not an endorsement by the sponsor of any candidate. The sponsor would be Valley Improvement Projects. So it says to go in a random order. Let's just say start from that end and go here. Is that random enough? All right.
Hello. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, everybody, for paying attention to this forum. My name is Felipe Messina. My friends and family call me Phil. I'm running for the KPFA Local Station Board alongside the Rescue Pacifica slate. And I'm running for the KPFA Local Station Board because I believe in and stand for the Pacifica Radio Mission Statement and its promise for peace and socioeconomic justice, its promise for fostering understanding between nations, races, and creeds as stated in the Pacifica Radio Mission Statement. And number two, I believe in and stand for democratic governance of KPFA and the Pacifica Radio Network. And this was a democratic governance structure which was won after the KPFA lockouts of 1999 through a lot of hard struggle. I remember participating in those marches, and there was times when there was thousands of people that were out there. We were camped out in front of KPFA radio. It really looked like there was an effort to shut down KPFA, sell off KPFA. But there were a lot of people that believe in the mission of KPFA and Pacifica Radio. And so through court struggle, we won a democratic governance structure for KPFA. And we want this ability to have this local station board that's comprised of listeners and staffers who represent listeners and staff members and then govern the radio station and then each of the Pacifica radio stations in a democratic fashion. But the victory that we had in this after the 1999 KPFA lockouts, I think, was an incomplete victory. I mean, Coretta Scott King, I think, said, "Each generation must struggle to maintain freedom." And it's not freedom and victory is not something that we just achieve and then it lasts forever, but we need to constantly defend it. And so there were many big-name celebrities that were involved in the struggle of 1999 to defend KPFA. But after we won this democratic structure, all those people seemed to disperse, and we didn't have the support ongoing of those people. And it seems to me that there was people within KPFA who never really wanted this democratic structure and have been working ever since to undermine the democratic structure within KPFA and the other Pacifica radio stations. So that's why I'm running for the KPFA Local Station Board. As a listener, I'm very much interested in the, I mean, after all, KPFA radio offers radio programming. And so as a listener, for example, when I worked as a day laborer, I would listen to KPFA radio all day, and it would be very inspiring to me as a day laborer, listening to activists and all of these issues that you don't hear anywhere else. But over the years, like at least since 2020, I remember 2021, I noticed just the lineup changes on the KPFA radio change. Then there was a Pacifica Radio app that I discovered where I can toggle between the different Pacifica radio stations. I prefer more hard-hitting news and investigative journalism that's going to get to the heart of the issues. Everybody's on a difference, on a different position on the political spectrum. Some people are more in the center of the political spectrum, some people are more to the right, more to the left. I'm an anti-capitalist. That means I'm pro-labor, pro-worker. So as an anti-capitalist, that's what I'm looking for in radio programming. And so I would switch, toggle between the Pacifica Radio app and then tune into WBAI or WPFW that I would find more compelling radio on. And then eventually, I noticed even on all of the Pacifica radio stations, there would be less compelling radio programming. And then I would find myself switching to YouTube channels or podcasts that would have much more compelling stuff like The Gray Zone or The Labor Video Project on YouTube or Geopolitical Economy Report with Ben Norton, things like this. And then I would ask myself, "Why isn't this on KPFA radio? Why don't they have an aspect of the KPFA website where they can feature it and then let people know that there is this stuff going on? Why doesn't KPFA radio feature activists that are on the ground doing demonstrations like in the Central Valley, for example, Modesto Cobb Watch, Valley Improvement Projects, that are doing good work in the community and it's not being featured? And there's activism in the Bay Area as well, and it's not being featured on the radio? So I'd ask myself, "Why isn't this on there?" Now, when I look at KPFA, the programming, I would like to offer my perspective as a listener about what I think are some of the highlights and then some of the lowlights. Some of the highlights on KPFA Public Affairs programming, and this is, again, my interest is mainly in the public affairs programming, so I'm not really talking about the arts or the more cultural programming, but the public affairs programming. For me, some of the highlights include Flashpoints with Dennis Bernstein, weekdays at 5:00 p.m., Hard Knock Radio with David D., weekdays at 4:00 p.m., Project Censored with Mickey Huff, that's Fridays, I believe, at 1:00 p.m., Economic Update with Richard Wolff, Fridays at 10:00 a.m. It's a great economic analysis. Although I would have some criticisms, some constructive criticism of Dr. Richard Wolff. I have a degree in economics from the heterodox economics department at the University of Missouri-Kansas City, and he's friends with the heterodox department, economics department there at the time. For people who don't know, there is kind of division in the academic, the economics discipline. Most of the economics departments across the country are based on the Chicago School of Economics, which is establishment, pro-Wall Street type of economic analysis. There's very few heterodox economics departments, and UMKC was one of them. And so we had Dr. Michael Hudson associated with UMKC, Dr. L. Randall Ray, who wrote the book on modern monetary theory, Dr. Stephanie Kelton, who was the chief economist for the Bernie Sanders campaign. But for some reason, some people who have a big audience, like Bernie Sanders, refuse to talk about some of the main policy proposals that come from heterodox economics, like a job guarantee program, for example. We could end involuntary unemployment as we know it if we institute a job guarantee program, which we can do right now. We just lack the political will. And for some reason, Dr. Richard Wolff doesn't talk about this. I think his position is that people who promote the job guarantee program are just trying to save capitalism, and they're not radical enough, they're not Marxist enough. That's fine, but I think it's still a valid point to talk about this. I learned about the heterodox economics department in, at the University of Missouri-Kansas City from Guns and Butter, a program that was on KPFA radio and which was pushed out or dropped or not supported by the dominant group that tends to be in power at KPFA radio. I went and got a degree, graduated with honors from University of Missouri-Kansas City. I came back and then tried to communicate what I learned about how we can have a job guarantee program and send emails to Ms. Jezzerich so she could talk about it on Letters and Politics. No response. Send emails to people at KPFA radio, no response. And to this day, people don't know about these ideas of how we can improve our economic status in the country. But that's one critique I would offer about Economic Update with Richard Wolff. Voices of the Middle East and North Africa, Thursdays at 11:00 a.m., excellent program. Africa Today with Walter Turner, Mondays at 7:00 p.m., excellent program. The Ralph Nader Radio Hour, Mondays at 11:00, excellent program. But then most of the KPFA radio programming, I think, is a big disappointment because most of these programs posture as radical radio, but they're confined within a framework which shields the Democrat Party from meaningful critique. And I think this is, this is, they function to herd listeners under the Democratic Party umbrella within a false left-right paradigm of what I see as the US two-party dictatorship because the two dominant political parties in our country collude to block political alternatives from ballot access. They have colluded to create top-two primary elections that block alternative voices to the left of the Democrat Party, which is where I think most of the working class is. And that's why there's such low voter turnout in the, in the big elections, presidential elections, congressional elections. So these programs, I think, posture as radical radio, but they confine the imaginary of the listeners within this Democrat Party apologist type of mentality. And I would say that includes the KPFA Evening News, which is on weekdays at 6:00 p.m., Making Contact, Fridays at 2:00 p.m. This includes Talkies with Chris Welch, Fridays at 11:00 a.m. I've called into that program, like when the Ukraine war was beginning, to challenge her guests, and then she would just cut me off, right? I would cite Max Blumenthal, who reports the history of how the US government was involved in trying to stage a coup and then put in their own puppets in Ukraine, and then she would just cut me off. And then when you have people that are supporting the establishment status quo perspective, she lets them go on and on. And that's really upsetting, and it turns listeners off because you're not getting a honest discussion on air or in the call-ins. Terra Verde, I think, is the same thing. It's great that they do interview local grassroots groups, like, for example, Valley Improvement Projects, I believe they've interviewed on there. But when you listen to it overall, the overall stance is that Terra Verde is confined within this framework which shields from, which shields their discussions, they shield the Democrat Party from meaningful critique within discussions. So they're upholding the status quo in that regard. Democracy Now! is another disappointment that postures as radical radio. I would refer you to Danny Hifong's excellent critique of Democracy Now! Up Front is on weekdays at 7:00 a.m., same thing. Background Briefing with Ian Masters. You have warmongering. It's the same thing. Behind the News with Doug Henwood, same thing. Letters with Politics with Ms. Jezzerich. Against the Grain, also same thing. The Tom Hartman Program, same thing. So overall, we have this kind of synthetic left posturing as radical radio that fools a lot of people, but if you look closely, it's not sincere, it's not authentic. And I would challenge that, and that's part of the reason why I'm running. So thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Stan Woods. I'm running with the Rescue Pacifica Slate, which includes Felipe Messina, or aka Phil Messina, Virginia Browning, Donna Carter, and also we're allied with current board members Daniel Borstrom and Lisa Mills and Steve Selsert. And we also, we have four other candidates, too, that can't be here today. I used to be on the KPFA Local Station Board. KPFA has been a pivotal figure in not just the Bay Area, but Northern California progressive movement, progressive left since the 1940s. When KPFA was first founded, it was one of the first FM stations in the country, and they literally had to pass out transistor radios so people could listen to the station. And now KPFA is often incorrectly characterized as a quote-unquote "Berkeley Station." It's physically located in Berkeley. Its power tower is in Berkeley Hills. However, KPFA reaches all the way from Santa Rosa in the north to Monterey in the south and also somewhat east, as the moderator mentioned. A lot of people listen to it, whether it be online or through commuting, whatever, in the Central Valley. Also, KFCF, which we're allied with in Fresno, also, I believe, reaches here, right? And so the programming does have a significant impact. How many listeners do we have? Who knows exactly? But I remember one example of the importance of KPFA. On the build-up to the Gulf War, I'm talking about the first Gulf War in the 1990s, dating myself a bit, there was estimates done, actually much to the displeasure of corporate media posters, that up to half million people in the week leading up to the war listened to KPFA because they knew that the corporate media wasn't given the accurate coverage of what was going on. And so KPFA has a real tremendous role to play, and we're in danger of losing it. Some of the reasons they say, "Well, it's financial," and so on. Well, there's a lot of things about that. I remember when I was on the board some years ago, I made a statement that I'd rather have 1,000 people give $25, which is the minimum membership, or 25, than 25 people give $1,000. I'll admit, the general manager of that time was very honest. She said, "Au contraire," she'd rather have 25 people give $1,000 each because there's a much more stable financial base. And totally ignoring the fact that many of us see KPFA as part of a movement for social justice. And if you have a movement, you'd rather have 1,000 people give $25 and 25 people give $1,000. I echo much of what Brother Messina said regarding the programming. One of the things we would like to see, one of the things our slate is running on, is restoring a program council. It's funny, during fundraising drives, KPFA programmers constantly say to listeners, "It's your station. It's for you. You make the decisions." But the rest of the time, not so much. The mantra, at least the unofficial mantra, is "Leave it to the pros. Leave it to the professionals." And we feel like KPFA is too valuable as an alternative to the corporate media than to be left to the professionals. So we'd like to restore, which we did have for several years, a democratically-selected program council, which includes staff, rank-and-file members of the station board, listeners, and management. And we made many decisions. I often, I won't even say, I won't say which show, but there's a show I couldn't stand, but it had a real genuine base, and a lot of listeners liked it, so I voted for renewing that show. It was a legitimate base. And so there's a sort of a caricature of some of us, we just want to eliminate all the shows we don't like. That's not true, but we want democratic decision-making about what stays on and what isn't staying on. And also, there's a running joke that sometimes with some KPFA programmers seem to think a program with KPFA is like a Supreme Court appointment. It's a lifetime position. There's many people out there and many young activists. People say people, young activists, don't listen to KPFA or listen to FM radio that much, but many do. And also, there's also been ventures into podcasting and so on by KPFA. So, but the door is hardly ever open for them. You can count the number of times, on one hand, we've had new shows in the last 10, 15 years, and that has to change. So there's many problems with programming, there's problems with democratic governance. I'm a strong believer in rank-and-file democracy. I'm a retired member of International Longshore and Warehouse Union Local Six. We had executive board that was elected. We had chief stewards, like I was for some time, that was elected. Our officers were elected. And that should apply across the board. And we used to have, and up until early 2000s, a self-appointed national board and self-appointed local boards. There's problems with self-appointed boards. It shouldn't be like, let's say, KQED or NPR stations, which people say it's like, what's the phrase, something to do with the ballet. It's like Friends of the Ballet, like some, when rich and prominent people are appointed on the boards and it bolsters their credentials or their resume. It should be decided by listeners, and staff members should be able to elect their own representatives. We have that, but there's been a little in a way of that. Our current station board rarely meets. It should be meeting at least every month. There's many problems. And also, we need to keep KPFA together. We call ourselves Rescue Pacifica because we have this quaint idea that Houston, Texas, which is one of the largest cities in the country, or New York City, or Washington, DC, or Los Angeles, as well as here, needs to have alternative, that very much needs alternative. And our opponents, not so much. They wouldn't argue that those stations don't deserve alternative, but they want to break off KPFA from Pacifica, and we feel like that would be disastrous mistake all around. So I urge people, the ballots go out August 15th. Anybody who's a member, anybody who's given $25 or more in the last year will receive a ballot via email, and I believe in a special request, they can receive an old-fashioned paper ballot in the mail. They have six weeks to vote, and I certainly hope you'll vote for us. And the leaflets we have out today has a listing of our eight candidates and plus a couple other candidates for those who are staff members, which obviously aren't here today. And please consider us because we really need to keep a genuine territory to the corporate media, now more than ever. I mean, let's face it, not only do we have the slaughter going on in Gaza, and the billions and billions of dollars have been used to finance that, we have the war in the Ukraine. And I'm certainly not pro-Russian invasion or pro-Putin, but I feel like this is a disaster that could lead to World War III unless it's stopped, and the US is strongly behind that in World War II. And KPFA has been very weak in objective coverage of that slaughter, which is a slaughter in its own right, albeit very different in many ways from Gaza. So please consider us, check us out, and please vote for us. Thank you.
I'm Virginia Browning, also running for the board for Rescue Pacifica. One thing that Phil Felipe mentioned was listening to radio while he was working as a day laborer, which I used to do at work all the time, too. And, sorry, Daniel, I got one now. That's okay. Thanks. Yeah, he said it really well, his whole, these statements from both Stan and Phil were If you go to rescuepacifica.net, but org works, too, but rescuepacifica.net, you can see more about each of us. And when you vote, you can look on the Pacifica Elections link that Pacifica put out. And I, in my statement, I emphasize things that I've been saying for years. You know, we listeners have been paying for one person or another, or group or another to update the website, to put us into the electronic age. And we've put, we listeners have put much, a lot of money into that, and yet we're not in the electronic age really too much anymore. It's good that Phil, who's very organized, I think, can probably find the shows that he wants to find in the archives, and so can I, especially if they're recent. But if you try to search by a topic and a show from a few years ago, it's like going to a library without a catalog. So there, it's, that's kind of crazy in this day and age. There are volunteers that have volunteered to help with that. I come from a community radio station long ago. I started at a community radio station in conservative Utah, and it was actually wonderful. It was a flowering of discussion among people that normally wouldn't be having these discussions, inviting many people in, going out, recording things in the community. Young people, I was young then, they have a lot of energy for these things. And okay, maybe radio isn't what it used to be, but now it could be on websites. Phil here, he gave great examples of some of the things that KPFA could be doing, putting, linking things like The Gray Zone and other things to the KPFA website. But there's something about, it's something considered, I guess, a little too messy by some of the comfortable people that run that station, where they don't want to invite too much volunteer help in. Now, it's possible to get good volunteer organization. I worked with that in, in the radio station I worked in long ago and in other political groups, and I'm sure other activists around here have had that happen, where you can have volunteer coordinators who help to inspire volunteers and to work together and to enjoy doing it. But KPFA doesn't really do that, except for their little in-group that's, I don't know. I guess I don't want to sound too grouchy about it, but there's just a lot that could be done, and a lot of it is in the things that Rescue Pacifica stands for. The other side likes to say that democracy is too messy, but what's the alternative? The bylaws that they've tried, they want to change the bylaws again that they've tried to shove down our throats. That would mean the whole network would be run by the people that have lost at least twice the membership that has been lost in the last 10 years, probably longer. It's just gone zzzzz down the hill. And it doesn't need to be that way. People are still interested in media, as Phil, I think, made really clear. KPFA could be in on that. And financially, we need to get into the new age. There are concerns about privacy if we rely on just private internet sites, but this is stuff, this is even more reason why we need to have good, organized discussions among community people. In my, in my area in Berkeley, and I'm sure this is true all over the country, people are being discouraged from having more democracy. They're being encouraged to have less of it. I was on a meeting last weekend, all over the world, there are hundreds of organizations that have regenerated land. It's so inspiring. They've taken land that's been completely decimated by rotten building and capitalist organization, and they renewed it and revived it. And this is not, this is done because people get involved with each other and they're inspired to do so through democratically organized and invited arrangements. When I was putting out flyers for, I'll just end with this, I was putting out flyers for our election a week ago, I happened to run, this isn't the first time, but it was kind of a coincidence in one day, two people, one had gone through the KPFA apprenticeship program, which has now been disbanded. And, but whether it had or not, what happened was people went through that program and then there was no place within the station or network to put them because they were considered to be intrusions into the so-called professional job place. Now, okay, I respect many of the professional people that we have at KPFA, but there has to be a way for them to work with the 200, you know, the people that are being paid are a very small percentage, and they need to work much more inclusively with those other people that are willing. There are award-winning reporters that are not put on the air from all, that are, that go all over the world, but they're not allowed on if they don't cout out to the little in-group that you might love at KPFA, but I think you should see that it could be better. Anyway, I ran into two people like that last weekend who felt really shoved out of, after they had gone through some training, and very enthusiastic, willing people, like I was when I was young, going, willing to go out, recording things, putting things on the air, spending hours and hours to edit things. And I think that this video is, there are people right here in this room that know how to do video and audio that are not encouraged to be part of KPFA's community. So it needs to change financially. So when they tell you that, that we don't know anything about finances, I think they're talking about themselves. And we don't, there's, they have this new, I just must say this, they had this little scare tactic campaign implying that we want to get rid of the building, which is so not true. The only person that I ever heard talking about getting rid of KPFA's building was the former general manager that was allied with our opponents, who said that he didn't think radio needed to have that building. Well, the building could be a wonderful hub for bringing people in, and once was, and could be even more. So rescuepacifica.net.
Hi, I'm Donna Carter, and I'm on the KPFA LSB. I got interested, I got interested in being elected to the LSB because I was concerned about some of the programming and some of the comments I heard from some of the staff not at the station, I felt were really not in the spirit of KPFA's founding. So it's been a very interesting experience, and I've learned a lot in the last So it's been a very interesting experience, and I've learned a lot in the last couple of years. Currently, I'm also on the Pacifica National Board. And let me talk about the structure that guides KPFA legally. KPFA is a nonprofit entity with the state of California. It has a very extensive bylaw system. Pacifica has a very extensive bylaws, set of bylaws. And there are five stations in the Pacifica network. KPFA, KPFK in Los Angeles, KPFT in Texas, WBAI in New York City, and
PFW.
PFW in Washington DC. KPFA is by far the largest and most financially stable of all of the stations. However, all the stations have four representatives elected to the, as directors of the foundation. So what does the foundation do? One of the jobs of the foundation is to see that the bylaws are followed legally. It also has a financial, it takes care of the financial end of the foundation. Every station contributes what they can to the foundation to run it. What else does it do? It talks about policies, about how things are done. The foundation has a very small staff that follow, guides this process. Why is this all important? Well, in the current situation, KPFA provides central services to the foundation, and because it's the largest by far of the, all the stations, its financial, its central service quota is larger than all the other stations. All the stations have been losing listeners over the last few years, and this is a problem that the foundation is trying to work with, but it's a difficult situation. And some of the things that people here have talked about, about increasing outreach and using other media forms are definitely on the list to improve this situation. It's a difficult task, frankly. And then also, we have some of the democratization issues. There have been bylaws and lawsuits to the foundation by, by, by people who are on listener station boards, frankly. And this has drained the foundation's funds. So this is a real struggle, and I would definitely encourage you to vote for our Rescue Pacifica caucus and find out more about this. So I want to say that, much as Phil talked about the people out on the streets, which I was there 20 years ago with my kids, that the community is the people, are the people who are going to keep KPFA going and the whole movement of listener-sponsored radio. We are currently in an awkward position in the election situation because of the 2025 presentation at the Republican Party, which has a whole section which attacks public radio, attacks Pacifica in name. And it's really in our best interest to stick together the five stations and the, all the communities and amplify and make a noise about this attempt to defeat the radio and television community property. So, so please vote for our slate and look at our website, rescuepacifica.net. Thank you.
Well, being from the Central Valley here in the northern San Joaquin Valley, we're part of the valley, but we, like was mentioned before, we have a lot of commuters that work in the Bay Area and have a close connection with the Bay Area as well. How, how would you, as a slate of candidates, do more to reach out to Central Valley residents? And I know I heard that other parts of the Bay Area, you feel are maybe neglected by the radio station and more community outreach needs to be done. So I just want to hear kind of the vision for, for how you would work that as members.
Well, I think this is an effort to reach out, you know, Modesto is not real close to Berkeley, that's for sure. So we need to reach out to the communities, and there are multiple communities that can be doing that. Reaching out to different communities, Spanish-speaking programming, I think, would make a big improvement in reaching out to a lot of people. Having young activists on the radio, talking about their issues. KPFA has done originally a good job of covering the unfortunate situation in Gaza, and this has attracted a lot more people to listen to the station recently. So those are just some of my ideas about how we could improve our reach out and membership.
Yeah, Spanish-language programming and promotion. A lot of people, in Berkeley even, where I go, they don't even know KPFA exists. I mean, they, it needs to be promoted much more. And volunteers can help with that. They can say, people, it can be online, and people in Modesto can read the stuff online. People, there could be, it could be organized so that people that are concerned about areas out here specifically keep track of calendars and places and a place like this where they could post notices of things that are of interest. There's, there's sort of like no entry point right now in KPFA to do that, and, and community members need to be invited in to help with that.
Yeah, well, I echo what Donna in Virginia said, is in terms of, one thing, I believe we recently expanded a Monterey due to repeater station there, being affiliated with, but once again, something similar could be done in Modesto and Stockton. And also, I believe some of the coverage, I believe there is, I believe KFCF in Fresno does reach this area too. But part of it has to be to make it more relevant to the local people. Take San Jose. San Jose is by far the biggest city in the Bay Area. A lot of people, amazingly enough, don't know that. I mean, it's a million plus, as opposed to San Francisco, which is about 850,000 or something, and Oakland and, and Berkeley and Alameda and so on, much smaller. Yet, there's very little coverage on the news of what's going on in the South Bay. So if we don't have enough coverage of the South Bay, what does that say about the Central Valley? Occasionally, you hear a little bit of coverage mainly from a reporter, a board member from KFCF covers a bit of the Central Valley, but we need to greatly intensify that. Bilingual programming, maybe even trilingual programming, I believe, in this, in San Slaus and San Joaquin County and also Fresno County, there's a lot of Hmong people, there's a lot of people of Asian minorities. And even though most are bilingual, they still appreciate hearing programming in their native language. It makes them more receptive, generally speaking, when you have that, it makes people more receptive to other areas. For example, Houston at one point had seven bilingual programs, KPFT. And I think that would, so increase the amount of coverage of what's going on in the Central Valley, which is a huge part of the state. Also, the type of issues, social justice issues are rarely glaring here. I work for the Oscar Grant Committee Against Police Brutality, excuse me, against Police Brutality and State Violence and State Repression. And we've often, we've traveled down to this area sometimes because of some shooting or beating or even outright murder of an unarmed individual in Modesto or Stockton or even Tracy. We need to be intense coverage of that and to make people feel like it is their station and that we're covering things the corporate media is not covering, which is a huge. And back to the coming up elections, we don't all agree necessarily on who to vote for in November, whatever. However, I'm a Peace and Freedom Party, which has been on the ballot since 1968. And one thing that KPFA is lacking of, it sounds like the corporate media, there's very little coverage of alternative candidates on the ballot. There's a lot of Green Party candidates, Peace and Freedom Party candidates, there's millions of people in California that aren't affiliated with either, the Democrats or the Republicans aren't registered with either. There needs to be fair coverage of that. Not saying to exclude the other candidates or other organizations, but there need, other campaigns, but there needs to be fair coverage. Part of it is self-fulfilling prophecy. People talked about the duopoly and it's make it sound like it's a natural phenomenon, like the Rocky Mountains or something. And it isn't. It's, it's, there's a lot of effort put to keep third parties, so-called third parties off the ballot or to marginalize their candidates. I'm not saying that KPFA should be a voice of just people in the Greens or Peace and Freedom Party or Independent Love Candidates, but they certainly should give them fair coverage, a hell of a lot more fair coverage, fair coverage than the corporate media does. And so I believe if we do things like that, we can greatly increase the coverage here. But of course, technically, I'm sure a repeater station could be found in, in either San Slaus or San Joaquin County that could really expand it, so people wouldn't just have to listen to it online or if they commute to the Bay Area. Thanks.
So I believe the question was, what would we as candidates do to expand Pacifica, KPFA radio's reach or engagement out to the Central Valley, right? I second all of the previous candidates' ideas, and I would also like to offer my personal experience as somebody who has been listening to KPFA since I was in sixth grade. I was initially attracted to listening to Lowrider Oldies with Miguel El Gavilan Molina and Chuy El Tecolote Varela Friday nights, and that's what attracted me, and then hearing about, you know, Chicano Pride and La Raza. And then I learned about more of the programming and then being inspired by people like Dennis Bernstein on Flashpoints, especially during the fun drives, when he would inspire people like myself to go from being passive listeners to active listeners. And then even hearing Amy Goodman saying, "This is your station," during fun drives, you know? Participate, get involved, right? And then around 2007, when I finally went from being passive to more active and then started attending the local station board meetings, this is the kind of the crux of my, of my, of my perspective that I want to share here. And then let me know if I exceed the time, because I want to honor the time limits being fair. But I agree with all these ideas, but then how do we actually accomplish them, right? Because once you do go try to participate, whether on the local station board, attending the meetings, or going to KPFA and volunteering, what you find is a dominant group who dominates on the airwaves with the, with the dominant radio programmers, the morning show that used to be Philip Mulderi, Alian Alfendary, Mark Miracle, who dominate the news programming, they block people that they disagree with. I went and I tried to participate as well, and Mark Miracle refused to respond to my emails for the news training program, right? I was invited on air by Sasha Lilly and the then-manager, Lina Reggio, during a radio call-in, and they invited me on the air, onto the station. Sasha Lilly said, "Yeah, come on down, we'll chat." But then, when I volunteered with the local station, with the election in 2007, the election supervisor, and then those dominant, that dominant faction within the station saw that I was sympathetic to people that were critical of them, then they basically blocked me and then shut me down, smeared me. I attended a ballot counting that was announced on the air. And then when I showed up to the KPFA radio station with the video camera, they refused to let me into the radio station. And they called the police on me. I had left by that point, but then a few weeks later, there was a volunteer at the radio station, Nadra Foster, and they called the police on her, and she's a volunteer in the station, and she was beat up by the police. And so I think it's easy to get involved in the radio station if you agree with the dominant faction that's in there. So I think that the way that we expand engagement to other communities is to challenge this opposition that we have on the local station board, because somehow they manage to wield power over what happens at the station, what happens on the board, and then they block anybody who they disagree with. And I think it's very important that we be aware of the way that they behave on the board. I've witnessed them bully people, and I would like you to invite, I would invite you to share what your thoughts are, Mr. Moderator, Tom, and then also members of the audience to share their perspective on this. But I have witnessed since 2007 abuses of Robert's Rules of Order by our opposition, and they've gone under different names. They're currently called the KPFA Protectors, but they were called Safe KPFA before, they were called Concerned Listeners before that, they were called KPFA Forward before that. And you can find all this history online. They keep changing their names because they get a bad rap because of their bad behavior on the board. And, but this has just been an ongoing thing, and so I think in order to expand and include grassroots engagement, we need to challenge this opposition that blocks and prevents anybody who, that they disagree with on the board and in the radio station. So I'll yield at that point.
I'm Elizabeth Milos, a member of the KPFA Local Station Board, also a member of Rescue Pacifica. And I, I think that's also what, what we need, we need to bring about. I also think we should mention the names of the other candidates who are not here, Dr. Rabab Abdul-Halvi, as well as Pavma. Dr. Rabab is a San Francisco State Professor, Ethnic Studies, Arab Middle Eastern East Diaspora Studies Palestinian woman, and also a member of the California Faculty Association. And Pavma Venasi Zambi, who is a software engineer and also a member of Jewish Voice for Peace. And Phoebe Thomas, formerly Phoebe Sorgan, who's a Green Party County, Green Party County Council member at Berkeley, and also Berkeley, universal, Unitarian, universalist, member of the Social Justice Committee. And Mikaie Freeman is a disability rights organizer and former chair of the Berkeley Commission on Disability. Just want to make sure we have, we have their names mentioned as well. And we, I would like the KPFA subscribers who can vote to vote for the entire slate together, preferably Dr. Rabab first and Donna Carter second. The rest are, you know, are not in order of preference, but we did put them present first, because there's two things that I want to mention. Last March, Rescue Pacifica presented a resolution on, an emergency resolution on Palestine, asking for the KPFA LSB to oppose genocide, oppose US aid to Israel, support the BDS movement, and to stop the siege on Gaza. And they voted it down. Our opponents voted an emergency resolution on Gaza down. And you could probably see it on Labor Video Project, the actual vote, how it went. But then they presented as if, later on in an email, they presented as if a letter that was sent to KPFA staff congratulating them on their coverage in Gaza, and they, they signed this letter. But that letter was never sent to the KPFA, presented at the LSB to be approved by, by the rest of us. So they, at the same time that they had voted down this resolution, they have also, one of the members on their side put out this article about the media and Gaza, and he's presenting himself as if he's a supporter of Palestine, but he voted down this resolution on Gaza. And he's been actively red-baiting and green-baiting the members on this, the candidate members as well as LSB members, present and previous ones, accusing us of everything under the sun, basically. And when I say red-baiting, you know, we're talking about a network that has been in existence for 75 years, who has fought against McCarthyism, who's fought against the Vietnam War, who has always presented in its history, its long history, you know, third-party or alternative voices that are not heard normally, which is part of its mission statement. So I, I think that we have the honor of having Dr. Rabab Al-Duhabi as first place, because we want to center Palestinian voices, number one. We want to make sure that that is central also to, to, that voters, KPFA voters realize that this is very important for us, that, that we center Palestinian voices there. And we have Donna Carter second, because she's a member of the Pacifica National Board from Rescue Pacifica, and we wanted her to be reelected to that board as well. So the other thing is, is our opposition, one of the ways that our opposition has been actively trying to destroy Pacifica has, in one of the latest round, was the Federal Communications Commission, the complaint that Commission, the complaint that one of the other members who's in our opposition, who's running as well, as a staff candidate, she presented, she filed a petition to deny WBAI its license. WBAI is a sister station out of, out of New York, New York City. One of the justifications that they gave was the same justification that they gave when they tried to close it down in October 2019, that it was draining Pacifica, that it was violating the rules. In reality, WBAI has had serious financial issues, but those financial issues, many people don't understand the history behind this and this is something that we need to continue to repeat because it is very significant. When 2000, when, when September 11th, 2001 happened, the Pacifica, the WBAI lost its transmission license, I'm sorry, it lost its transmission towers. And they had to, they had to lease the Empire State Towers and they arrived at a very disadvantage, disadvantageous agreement where they had to agree to an eight percent hike in rent every year. Now, if you think about that, that was back in 2001, 2003, I think was when the actual agreement was signed. And if you think about that, eight percent a year, all five stations combined would not be able to cover that kind of an overhead cost this day and age. And it was all placed on the shoulders of WBAI when it was the PNB, the Pacifica National Board that had signed that agreement to begin with. And there's a reason why we're a network. The network is supposed to be, make us stronger so we support each other. But at every LSB meeting, they're continuously trashing Pacifica and saying, we're the best station, we have more money. It's true. Northern California has a lot of money, there's a lot of trust fund babies out there, I'm sorry to say this. There's also been a lot of bequeathments and we have Silicon Valley, so we have a lot of people, you know, with lots of money and they're not supporting us, that's for sure. You know? Those are the ones that are primarily the ones that have been supporting the Protectors. So I hope I'm not breaking any rules in terms of disparagement, but I think everything that I've said so far, you know, is not a disparagement, it is a criticism and a valid criticism of our opposition. Now, I wanted to ask Donna in particular about what the latest round of what happened of what this, regarding the Pacifica Archives. It seems that the employees of Pacifica Archives were fired, right?
Correct.
And Pacifica Archives is one of the most major assets and what, a treasure that doesn't exist anywhere in historical documents of anywhere, not even in the, in, in the Library of Congress, am I right, Daniel? I, I don't know, I mean, you probably would know this, that the Library of Congress doesn't even have this, these archives. These archives are 75 years of struggle of the Pacifica network throughout the country dealing with the most, you know, how it fought against the House Un-American Activities Committee, how, how it fought against censorship, the, the cultural tradition, the cultural richness behind these archives are important. However, now it looks like this particular PNB, Pacifica National Board, which happens to be at this time have the majority of our opposition, is in the majority, right? They have allowed these archive employees who have known this material for all these years to be fired, you know?
Pacifica has gotten a grant from the Mellon Foundation to, to catalog 20,000 items of the archives and the Library of Congress will also be part of that process in some fashion. So that was a welcome addition because the Archives staff never got enough money to actually preserve or document what it has. The Archives are one of the major assets of the foundation.
Before the next speaker speaks, I wanted to say that all of the candidates were invited. So if there is not any representation at this event from any of the, the opposing slate of candidates, it's because they chose not to attend.
My name is Daniel Borgstrom. I'm currently a board member at KPFA. I've been on the board for about five and a half years now and I'll be terming, terming out at the end of this year, so I won't be running again. I'd like to say a couple of words about what the board does, or rather what it, and what it doesn't do and what it should do. Now currently, we meet every other month for about two hours a day and we listen to reports, which, which is good, I mean, sure, reports from the PNB, reports from the Treasury and that's important, good. We don't do anything about them. We, we have motions, we run out of ti, and we run out of time, so most motions together that we, with Rescue Pacifica put motion, put forward motions and they don't get dealt with. I mean, they just, sorry, right out of time, meeting adjourned. Oh yes, there's one other important thing we do. We do a lot of WBAI bashing. And if you were to sit there and listen to us, you might think, oh, that's the WBAI LSB. No, no, no.
WBAI is where?
Yeah, WBAI, that's in New York City. Now we are the Bay, we are in the Bay Area, California. Why are we so, it's not really our job, I mean, maybe it is our job to do something to help other stations, okay, I can see that, but a lot of, they're just plain bashing. They have a controversial programmer, Gary Null, so they're always attacking him. I, I don't take a position, I haven't, don't have an opinion on him other than to say, I know he's very controversial. Some love him, some hate him. But it's kind of strange that our KPFA felt it important to go to the, I mean, our KPFA LSB felt it important to go to the Federal Communications Commission, the FCC, and file a complaint asking, which, and it's complaint, complaint, what was it, petition to deny, that's the title of it, to deny, you know, to cut in on their thing. And that was about two years ago and now we got a result of that. It's, we have, now have a monitor, a comply, I think compliance officer is the official word for it, that's going to be sitting, watching over us, putting us under a microscope. And he said, put, that's the, their words, putting us under a microscope. And it's going to make our fund drive, fundraising raising a lot more difficult. And this gives a real foot in the door to, well, Trump if he gets elected, but it wouldn't, I wouldn't put it past the Democrats to do this either. I mean, how much, how much First Amendment rights respect can you expect from, from a Congress which applauds, vigorously applauds a genocider? Not too much. But, okay, I said what we do doing, what we, now there's a lot of stuff that we should be doing. First off, it's, we should, we have a voice on programming. Our opposition denies that, denies that, but it's written in the bylaws. I don't have them in front of me, I can't just say exactly where, but you can find them very easily, they're online. That we do, we are supposed to work with the station management and the station whatever to have, to, on programming. We could do that by bringing in a programming, a committee, a programming committee, I think, I think Stan, Stan Woods here, he was on the, that committee. I might ask him a bit about it. But I want to talk about one other thing we should be doing. Each year, we are supposed to evaluate the general manager. Oh, by the way, we also have a voice in choosing the general manager or fire, if the case may, may necess, be necessary, to fire the general manager. We have a voice in that, we can't do it alone, but working with the PNB. But anyway, we're supposed to turn in an, an evaluation every year. And I've been on the board five and a half years now and we've done no such thing. Someone told me it's about 11 years since we last did, since the board last did an evaluation of the general manager. And one year, and we do have criticisms of the current general manager, who is actually in interim, and the previous one, we had criticisms, well, they, the board, the LSB actually put out a, a motion saying, we're not going to have any evaluation because there's been so many lies about him. Lies? What we said weren't lies. But more important, more importantly, if they thought somebody had lied about him, what do you do? You open up, you ask questions, you say, you put your evidence on the table and say, here's what's, here's what's happening, here's the, here are the facts. They don't do it. They say, no, we don't want to do that, we don't want to do an evaluation because there's too much, too many lies. Okay. And there's probably other things too, but we don't do them and we need to be doing them. I want to emphasize that. We're not just a board sitting there for, I mean, it's an honor, I consider it an honor to be on the board, to have been elected, but what do we do? Well, we don't get to do much, but I would like to ask Stan to say something about the program committee, that our role as board members, we are, that part of our role is to work with the station staff and the general manager to get on programs. And I think he can tell us something about this.
Sure, I can add a little bit. For several years, and I, God, I'm uncertain about the exact dates, I think from 2006 to 2010, we had an active program council at KPFA. We had members of the local station board, we had staff, both paid and unpaid, we had management, and we also had people directly selected from the listeners. And we made a hell of a lot of decisions. And like I mentioned earlier, we were pretty brutally objective about decisions we made. Like, just because we personally didn't like this or that programming, whether it be Public Affairs or Music, we often would vote up a show if they, if they demonstrated they had a real base and real support. And also very importantly, that their programming, or programming or proposed programming in case of news shows, didn't violate the basic mission statement of Pacifica. That is, we're for social justice, we're against war and we're for peace and also for racial equality in every sphere. And we lasted for several years and unfortunately, what often became, what often was minority in the board was increasingly frustrated by some of our decisions and they eventually unilaterally, the program director at the time, unilaterally shut down the program council. And we like to see that restored because they can't have it both ways. They can't say, this is your station with screaming out capital Y O U R when it's doing fundraising, but then the rest of the year shut up and just applaud us. It's not the way it should work.
I'm just going to mention this in case there's ever any pushback about this. This is common for them to engage in tricks. They did eventually unilaterally just shut it down, but what they did before that was they got their people to just quit showing up so that then they could claim there was no quorum and, you know, so, so they, they wrecked it from the inside when they, when I saw, they got things like Against the Grain and some shows that are still on there while it was going on, but then they ate it away from the inside.
Funny little anecdote. There was a prominent staff member who was on the program council and they were, she didn't get the email instructing her not to show up for the program council meeting so we wouldn't have a quorum. She showed up anyway and she was suddenly flabbergasted and embarrassed and blushed and said, I want to record it that I wasn't here. It was funny.
I'm Steve Zeltzer, I'm a member of the local station board. I used to have a program on KPFA called Work Week for half an hour a week and it's the only, was the only labor program on KPFA. Now think about it, you have so many union people, working people in Northern California, they say they're a pro labor station and they don't have a labor show. So the manager, Quincy McCoy, at, without any kind of evaluation of that program, which was on for years, said, we want to go in another direction. We want to go in another direction. What does that mean? What it has meant is if there's no regular labor program in KPFA, that's what it's meant. But one of the issues is we face a dangerous situation in this country, the rise of fascism. And we have to take seriously the threat to independent radio, independent media. And Project 2025 is a very important document from the point of view of the fascist because they want to get rid of thousands of federal employees and replace them with fascists from Turning Point USA and other organizations. And in this Project 2025, as I think Elizabeth mentioned, they mentioned Pacifica. Now Pacifica is not getting government funding because they haven't been able to get their books together and also at KPFA, for example, they have a CAB board and it doesn't meet. It's made no reports. But this is required if you're going to get public funding. So Community Advisory Board. They, they handpicked their own people, they wouldn't allow other people that volunteered. And that, that Community Advisory Board, by the present majority, hasn't even met, hasn't made a report. There's no, no responsibility and accountability. And as been said earlier, there's been never a valuation in years of the manager and the interim manager. Why is that? Why is, that's one of the responsibilities of a local station board, to evaluate the managers. No evaluation. They don't want to evaluate. And that is a, I think, a dereliction of duty. If you're going to run for the KPFA board, you should carry out your responsibilities. They refuse to do that. And I think it's a pattern of people who say, let management run things. Well, the same people who say that actually have been complaining about WBAI. And not only complaining about it, but in my years on the KPFA Local Station Board, they spent hours and hours talking about a guy named Bill Campice, a lawyer, there are a lot of lawyers, Sharon Adams is another lawyer, talking about how they could sue Pacifica to break off KPFA from Pacifica. They spent hours and hours in the meeting talking about how they could sue the foundation. Now what does that have to do with defending KPFA or community radio? I mean, I would, we're wasting time instead of talking about how we can go to the community, how we can have a news bureau in, in Central Valley and get news reports here or in the South Bay, they're talking about how they can sue Pacifica. Their suits have cost, and they've sued them again and again, have cost over $600,000 and, and cost to the members of KPFA. So this is a very dangerous situation. They also, the majority, supported the shutdown of WBAI, illegal shutdown of WBAI. Sabrina Jacobs, a programmer who was previously an acting chair of the board, prevented the members of the WBAI board from voting and they voted to go along with the shutdown of WBAI in the middle of a fund drive and it was defeated in court. And John Vernelley, a former executive director of Pacifica, said that he was slandered by WBAI. He was one responsible and he, in arbitration, said he wanted money, he won $300,000 in an arbitration award. Now you had the business manager of KPFA sign a document saying, helping him, actually. You had another member of the board supporting him. And where did they get the money? They got it from a secret account at KPFA of $305,000 that people didn't even know about. The rest of Pacifica didn't know about it. So they had been hiding that money. Would we on the board have asked for an accounting, how many employees that we have? They can't answer, the business manager can't answer that question. There's a lot of money going into KPFA and there needs to be transparency and accountability of that and we haven't been able to get a finance committee. They don't want a finance committee at KPFA. Other stations have finance committees where people can look at the books. They oppose that at KPFA. Why would that be? Because they have a rubber stamp manage, board that goes along with whatever the manager has. And I have to say that these people that we're campaigning about, against really, Shara Gindelman, for example, made a complaint to the FCC saying that they should deny the license. Gindelman, for example, made a complaint to the FCC saying that they should deny the license of WBAI. Now imagine going to the federal government, which is supporting the corporization of radio, saying, your license should be denied. How could you do that? And what happened was, they did it on the basis that we're going to clean up WBAI, and we're going to shut it down. What happened was, is that the federal government said, okay, we're going to put the entire foundation under monitorship. So now, all the programmers have to go through a class to get proper programming. And the effect on KPFA is that they're unable to have a summer fund drive. They're unable to have a summer fund drive because they have to restructure all their, their fundraising. And it makes it much more difficult to make fundraising at KPFA. So what did they do? The management, in my view, lied to the listeners and said, we don't have to have a fundraiser on this summer because we got a BEQUEST. Well, first of all, they never report to the local station board about the BEQUEST. In fact, the manager doesn't bother showing up at a lot of the meetings at KPFA to the local station board to answer questions. And this is the kind of contempt they have for the listeners, because the listeners are elected by the members. There's an election. They wouldn't want you to know about it, because they don't have regular carts, they're not campaigning to let people know that there are differences, there are different points of view on the board. They are basically stonewalling, having a democratic structure at KPFA, and they've taken over the Pacific National Board. And on their watch, they laid off all the members of the archives. Has that been reported to the membership? They say they want to support the archives. Why did they take an action laying off all the members at the same time that they don't even have a fund drive at KPFA, which could be raising money to keep the members of the archive? So these, these contradictions are really growing at KPFA and Pacifica. My feeling is that if Trump is elected, and I don't support Trump, I don't support the Democrats either, but if Trump is elected, he will use this monitorship to immediately shut down Pacifica. They say, you can't run your affairs, because he appoints the chair of the FCC, and they'll use that as a justification to shut down Pacifica. These people that we're campaigning against and saying that we want to confront are the people that are allowing the government, giving the government an argument to shut it down. So this is a very dangerous development for Pacifica, and we have to open up Pacifica. We have to have, you know, news bureaus in the South Bay, in Central Valley, in the North Bay, get activists who can do news, and there are other, there are people in these communities who can do news and get it on the KPFA news program. We have to have, we have to have a live programming more. There should be a national day of programming on what is Project 2025. And have people from all over the country, have a national day of programming with an 800 call-in. People talking about how it's going to affect labor, how it's going to affect women, how it's going to affect our civil rights. So these are some of the things that Pacifica should be doing. Instead, they're spending time attacking WBAI and basically shutting down any kind of democratic governance.
Well, I can start by talking about some of the issues that we work on, as I'm sure you know, because you, you live in the area as well. The valley is, you know, a little more conservative than, than the Bay Area. We have, especially in the South Valley, there's a lot of oil and gas interests, there's obviously a lot of big agricultural interests, there's a lot of development interests in the area, and, and those interests, you know, tend to have the money and tend to get the decisions that they want. So, you know, one of the, the issues that, that we try to, to keep on folks' mind is, you know, we didn't get to the state of affairs that we're at right now by, you know, a series of accidents. We live in an area where from, you know, early days of California, things like land rights and water rights contributed to who owns land, who can farm land, who has access to capital, and things like that. And, you know, to put it very bluntly, Latinos, you know, Mexicanos, Chicanos, farmworkers have always been kind of looked at as, you know, labor to be exploited to build up the wealth of the landowners and the business owners here. And for a very long time, we're not allowed, you know, equal access to opportunity, to, to economic opportunity, to political opportunity. And we have to recognize, even as uncomfortable as it may make people feel around here, we have to recognize that that is the history of our area, and that the, of course, it's not as bad as it used to be, but the remnants are still here. For example, you were talking about bilingual programming. We have been struggling for a long time to get city government, county governments to put important documents in English and in Spanish, and maybe even other languages, too. We don't want to just stop there. But even just getting information in Spanish has been a huge fight. You know, the, part of the excuse is that, well, we don't have to, in, in many cases, they're not legally obligated, to, you know, it's expensive. But you hear sometimes too, well, you know, we give opportunity for people to call ahead of time, you know, it used to be like three days ahead of time, and in some places, it's a day ahead of time. But, but what you're saying is, you're not fully able, like, like English speakers, English as, you know, their only language speakers, to participate in your local government, where you are adding to the economy, where you are adding to the culture of the area, that you have, that you can't, you know, get off of work and then say, oh, I feel like going to the city council meeting and being a full participant. You need to ask ahead of time for translation. So it's gotten a little bit better recently, but, but we still need to continue to push that. And we've made the point that, you know, you say maybe a lot of folks that, that speaks Spanish or, or have English as their second language don't participate as much, but that's kind of a self-fulfilling prophecy, right? If you feel like you're not wanted, you're not reached out to, you don't know what the important issues are that are going to be talked about in your local government meetings, then yeah, you are going to feel like, you know, why bother going, I can't even, you know, even when documents are sometimes in Spanish, there'll be presentations during meetings that are only in English. So, you know, it's, it's still not, you're, you're not able to fully participate in the meetings. So that's just one example. We, you know, as, as social justice and environmental justice, we point to the fact that, you know, the, the way the communities were created, where a lot of the times, farmworkers were kind of put in these more rural, smaller towns, you know, in, in the rural areas of, not just Stanislaus County, but of the whole area. It was very easy to then put things that were not wanted in the more wealthy areas in those communities. And so we talk a lot about, one of the issues we were founded around, was the fact that the state of California, in the early eighties, they commissioned a report called the Sorrel Report, after the group that wrote it, about if they wanted to cite things like trash incinerators and other polluting industry, and they, they listed characteristics of communities, and they, they talk about rural communities, communities where people work in farming, communities where English isn't the first language, where high school education or lower is, is the education level. They even specifically mentioned Catholic communities. So they don't come out and say, you know, low-income Latino farmworkers, but they basically describe that community. Within a few years, after that report came out, Stanislaus County broke ground on a trash incinerator in West Stanislaus County, where historically, a lot of the polluting things have been pushed. There was a tire incinerator out there, there's the, the waste incinerator, the landfill, the Highway Five. A lot of, these days, it's a lot, a growing number of warehouses being put in that area. And so that, that leads to what we commonly describe to people as cumulative impacts of not only poverty and, and, you know, socioeconomic factors, but also pollution burdens. And that, even though, you know, this facility may meet all the federal and state criteria, you have multiple facilities or multiple sources of pollution in the same area, that are all having an impact on the same community members, and that's not exactly taken into account in a lot of the, you know, permitting processes and decision-making and things like that. So we try to, to bring that idea up, that we have to not only undo those historical inequities, but we have to look to the future in how we are going to do things differently now. And we, we hear a lot about, you know, fighting climate change and a just transition, and, and we see that as meaning, yes, we, we all want to fight climate change, we all want to save the planet, obviously for everybody, but if, if we're doing it in, you know, coming out with new technologies that might be polluting and putting them in the same locations as we've done in the past, you know, that's just repeating that pattern. So we want, we want a just transition and, and more equitable solutions to these problems. So I'll leave it at that, because I know I said a lot, but those are some of the issues that, that you hear here in the, in the valley, being kind of, you know, looked at as kind of second-class California, wanting economic opportunity, but also not wanting to be the dumping ground for the rest of the state, and just have, you know, access to the same things that, that all California residents have access to. So, thank you for letting me have the opportunity for that, yeah.
Do they have campus radio stations? Is there any alternative weeklies? You have this connections paper. If you could talk, and also, how bad is the corporate media here?
I can speak to that. I actually, you know, I went to school to work in radio. I did work in radio, just as a, you know, a poor college student, just trying to find my first job out of school. I actually worked for what used to be called Clear Channel Radio, and I kind of, so I got a very good inside look at corporate radio and their kind of strategy of, of coming in, buying up radio stations, streamlining the stations, putting them all in the same building, getting rid of all, you know, mostly all local programming, things like that. So, you know, the first, this was back in 2008, when the economic crisis happened, there was a lot of layoffs in radio, as you can imagine, people cutting their advertising budgets. So that actually provided me with the opportunity to, to move away from that. That's when I started doing different social justice projects in the community, like Modesto Cop Watch. We started valley improvement projects, started doing a lot of work around environmental justice. But, so there is that, there's, there is lack of media in general, like we don't have a local TV news station. They, there are some good alternative radio. You just mentioned, we have another group that we work closely with called Modesto Peace and Life Center. They have an office just down the street here. They put out the Stanislaus Connections newspaper, so that, that's a very, a very good source of, of alternative media, if that's how you, you know, how you want to call it. They, just recently, in the last couple of years, have established a radio station. So, and, and that has a lot of local programming on it. And it's, I might mix up the letters, it's KCBP. I hope it's not PB. I could look it up, but I get the, the letters mixed up sometimes, it's 95.5. We have, out of Salida, there's KGIG, and I'm forgetting the numbers on that, I could look that up as well. But those are, are two radio stations with, you know, more localized programming, more alternative news and things like that. And I'm probably, Stanislaus State does have a radio station, I think it's mostly, you know, student-run or student-programming, so I'm not as, you know, as familiar with that, I'm not.
Music?
Yeah, yeah, I think, yeah, I think there's a lot of students that have music shows there, but I'm just not super familiar with it as much as the other, the stations that I mentioned. But yeah, there, we, even in our early days, kind of as VIP was starting, we put, we used to put out a little zine, as we would call it, it was like just a little black and white, you know, multi-page magazine, that we would try to cover news that we would feel that wasn't being covered as much in the local newspaper, sometimes about police abuse issues, where, you know, we noticed that they would take basically what the police said in their report and just report that as truth without following up with, with, you know, other people that may have been witnesses to what happened. We would try to focus more on young people and communities of color in the area to give them a voice. And so there, there is a little history of that, and, and still is existing here, yeah.
Right. Because you mentioned Cop Watch and everything, and La Onda Bajita, you mentioned, we have also two staff candidates that we're running. But the staff candidates, and this is part of the structure of Pacifica, listeners, subscribers can vote for listeners, and staff members of each particular station can vote for the particular staff candidates, right? Now, there's been some changes in WBAI, for example, there's no longer the same director, and so, you know, the GMs are the ones who decide who's staff and who's not. And there's this structure within Pacifica, which we have staff that are two categories, paid staff and unpaid staff. Seventy percent of the productions that are done are done by unpaid staff, right? And when we say unpaid staff, it's people who are committed to the mission of Pacifica and who are, who don't get paid for it, but who otherwise put in quite a bit of their time to, to do this. And within the staff candidates, we have Anthony Fest from Project Censored, he's been involved with Rescue Pacifica for a very long time, and Project Censored is a very important program. He's also, was on the news department at one point. And we also have a staff candidate, Miguel Antonio Perez, who is, he produces the show Voces del Pueblo, which is the only Spanish-language show, which is only half an hour per month. When I say only Spanish language, means it's not bilingual, it's Spanish-language show, and it's part of La Onda Bajita, but it's only one-half hour every month. So, the, the issue with regard to Cop Watch, in particular, and Oscar Grant, maybe Stan could maybe talk more about this, but as Rescue Pacifica, as a member of LSB, we presented a resolution to the KPFA LSB to support one of our own staff members, who is a staff, is a member, is a host of Full Circle, Frank Sterling. And he is also a member of the Oscar Grant Organizing Committee, and is an organizer, and basically also a journalist. He went out to protest and to cover a rally that was against one of the police chiefs who was being, you know, congratulated, he was retiring and is being congratulated, but it was one of the police chiefs who, in fact, in San Francisco, had been part of the cover-up or, part of the, who was, who had been a police chief in San Francisco when, when a Guatemalan immigrant, Pat Congora, had been killed by the police. And then after that, he was moved to Antioch, and in Antioch, the police there have been known for being very racist and have been attacking a lot of Black and Brown people there. And he, Frank Sterling was attacked, as, when he was covering this, he was attacked by four police, tackled down, and then accused of him having attacked the police, which is typical of what police do. So we presented a resolution to the KPFA LSB two marches ago, I think it was 2021, if I'm not mistaken, when he was facing these charges by police, you know, he was, and we asked support from the KPFA LSB, and instead of support, we asked support from the general manager, who at that time was general manager. The general manager responded saying, we're not a political party. So, that doesn't even support their own staff members, right, from police brutality. And our KPFA LSB, you know, one of the members of the LSB, who now, I think, plays the role of the vice, the vice chair of the present LSB, she started attacking him directly, saying she had read the article on the Herald, and...
She's the treasurer, I think.
No.
She's running.
She's running again, right? But right now, she's vice chair, the treasurer is, who was previously the chair, who was supposed to be termed out, but they came back as treasurer. The other person who was also termed out came back as secretary, because you don't have to be a member of the LSB in order to be a treasurer or secretary, so they never really left. So, she started attacking Frank Sterling. And as a lawyer, she should know better, because this is, this was a pending legal case, it was a public meeting, and she started calling into question his innocence. So, I mean, I myself was also kicked out of the LSB at the, during the previous term by what was a, like witch hunt, basically, was almost, they created their own ethics committee, and the same person who filed a petition to deny against WBAI, the license, a sister station, a major asset of Pacifica, that same person was the one who was reading the charges against me when she, when they were trying to, when they expelled me. And they expelled me, but then the previous Pacifica National Board put me back on four months later, three months later. So, and they, what did they expel me for? They didn't want... They didn't want me exposing the fact that they were doing all these things to try to destroy Pacifica. That's the reason why they expelled me. So we have people who are censoring members, they're, they only give one-half hour of public comment, and they, less, even less than that if there's, you know, and every two months, only one-half hour. And they have been restricting, censoring, and attacking the minority members. So when they tell you that they are all for proportional, proportional representation, or all for democratic governance and all that kind of stuff, you have to see how they actually govern, and you'll know what they, what they actually believe in, you know.
Like I was saying, the Modesto Peace and Life Center that does the Stanislaus Connections Newspaper, they have KCBP, I think I did get it right, ninety-five point five FM. You can also check it out at kcbpradio.org. They are a Pacifica affiliate officially. And then, yeah. KGIG, which can be found at kgig.org or valleymedia.org. They're at one oh four point nine in Salida, north of Modesto, and it says on their website that in downtown Modesto where we are, they are KPHD ninety-three point three FM. So those are the two radio stations that I know I'm familiar with. And just wanted to touch on a couple of the other issues that we talked about. A lot of folks aren't aware, the San Joaquin Valley has some of the worst air quality in the country, so that's another one of those impacts. And coming from all different, yeah, kinds of, kinds of factors, including, you know, a lot of, the fact that a lot of people have to drive, you know, to their work in the Bay Area or Sacramento or other places. And we were talking about the farm workers, they are, you know, outdoors having to work, so they're exposed to the air pollution, where other folks might be working indoors, and things that are being exacerbated by climate change, like the heat, like the wildfires making the air even worse, and you're still having to work outdoors. And the pesticides that they are exposed to is also a major issue of concern and something that we work a lot around. So I just wanted to make sure that I mentioned those important issues to go along with what I was saying earlier.
Add another thing to the local media, as a listener here in the Central Valley, is that there's also Radio Bilingue, which I believe is out of Fresno, but they must have a repeater.
Yeah.
They have a signal repeater, so it sounds quite clear, I think it's eighty-eight point five here in Modesto. And I think I hear some Pacifica programming on there, maybe Democracy Now!, I think I've heard maybe Flashpoints. And so that's another one that's, that I would add to the list of other local media that's heard here in the area, Central Valley.
One of the issues on programming is that the management of KPFA and the management of all the Pacifica stations are required to do evaluations of programming. There have never been any evaluations of programming at KPFA. Why is that? When we ask that question, we don't get any answers from the local station board. That's one of their responsibilities, and we find that problematic, to say the least, that they're not doing any evaluations. At the same time, we are concerned that they spend, give Ian Masters' program nine hours a week. They replay his program every day. Now, don't you think that there are any local programs or other programs that are people talking about that could be put on? I mean, isn't that a possibility? We find that a problem and objectionable. We also think that Tom Hartman's program is a pro-Democratic Party program on KPFA. They give him a lot of hours. It turns out that Tom Hartman actually had a Joe Biden ad on his program, which is a violation of the FCC rules. So we have propagandists for the Democratic Party on KPFA, and these people are defended by the management and the people that we're running against at the KPFA Local Station Board. One of the policies of Pacifica, the reason it was founded in part by a activist, Lou Hill, was against war, against militarism, and against war. Yet there are programmers at KPFA and programs that regularly propagate war. In fact, there are programmers at KPFA, Tom Hartman was one of them, who said if you support a ceasefire, you're for Hamas, who support more military spending by the United States. The United States has a budget, trillions of dollars go to war. That is to the detriment of the people of this country and the world. Our infrastructure is falling apart, we don't have healthcare for all the people of this country, we don't have enough housing, schools are being shut down, public education is under attack, and we are spending trillions for war. Well, I have a problem having programs on KPFA of people who support the war machine, the military-industrial complex. I think that's against the goals and principles of Pacifica. Yet the management and the people that we're running against actually support this continued line of programming. I think that the danger of a world war is growing. We don't need more nuclear weapons, we don't need militarization of Asia, which is happening by the Biden administration and the Harris administration and Nancy Pelosi. Therefore, more military, more war spending, and war with, preparing for war with China and Russia, that is to the detriment of the world and is a threat to KPFA and Pacifica. So I think a vote for our slate is a vote against this kind of programming and for democratic transparency and for accountability. This is what we are fighting for in our campaign.
Radio Bilingue, KMPO eighty-eight point seven FM is another radio station as well. I know it's about four o'clock, which is when we were going to, I still have some time. I don't know if you want to take, like, make a final statement?
Okay, well, it's been great to air all the issues, even though some of them are very difficult. I hope that many people will tune into KPFA locally or, you know, in Berkeley. You can do it on the internet as well. And I hope many people will vote in this election, because I think it's a really important election for the future of KPFA and radio in general.
It was inspiring to hear, and I liked your question about it, Stan, all the media around here brought me back to my old community radio days and the knowledge that Pacifica does have a network of something like two thousand, two hundred stations, and they're struggling, some of them seem to have to be more conservative because of financial or whatever they have to do. But wouldn't it be great if we supported a Pacifica network that somehow connected this in a really real way with people? And websites or websites that showed the connections between all these things, instead of trying to push it all away. There is a show on KPFA called Terra Verde that has highlighted some of these issues. One of the things is, the shows at KPFA that have the money poured into them, they have the money to kind of be spunky and dialogue-y and sparky, and as a radio person, maybe you could say this better than me, you know what I mean? But if money is poured into things, people can find artistic ways of sparking things up, and it would be so great if all these, if, to see all this, these associates connected in a more prominent way.
Again, I'm Stan Woods, running with Rescue Pacifica. Go to rescuepacifica.net. The ballots go out August fifteenth, but there's a long voting period up to September thirtieth. One thing I mentioned about how, talking about alternatives, alternative media, having a left alternative in the media isn't just for people already that are roughly left, but to counter and try to make inroads in the people that have been seated to the right. I mean, when I say seated to the right, the right has just assumed that they belong, that they belong to them. Some years ago, I was campaigning for a peace and freedom party candidate for city council in Clovis, next to Fresno. Clovis is so right-wing, the Democrats didn't even run anybody for city council. This brother named John Crawford got fourteen percent of the vote and almost won a seat. And I would go to People's House as part of a team that came down from the Bay Area, another team came up LA, that we met with the local people in Fresno County, who said that she had always been a right-winger Republican, because everybody she knew was, and nobody would talk to her. And she was, and she always felt uneasy, because she was Armenian-American, and we're now considered white, that's the way she put it, but thirty years ago, we were considered non-white. And so the same racists that hated us thirty years ago say that we're part of them now. And so she was starting to question, just by me ringing her doorbell and presenting alternative. And so that's what, to me, what KPFA and other stations like the affiliates here should do. Not only, I'm not saying be an evangelist, but still counter some of the assumptions and don't just talk to people on the left already. Try to get people who are nominally on the right, but not really hardcore right, not really convinced right, to come over.
Once again, my name is Felipe Messina. My brothers, my friends call me Phil. I'm running with the Rescue Pacifica slate, and I also encourage everybody to vote for the Rescue Pacifica slate. We stand for, number one, quote, "Reliable news from a variety of independent sources in the field, not the corporatized wire services." Number two, an anti-war stance as opposed to support for quote-unquote humanitarian interventions. Number three, support for Julian Assange and other such journalists, publishers and/or whistleblowers. Four, airtime for diverse grassroots community groups, including during the morning drive time. Number five, bargaining rights for both the paid and unpaid staff, since the unpaid workers produce seventy percent of the station's program schedule. Number six, addition of new technology to broaden KPFA's online reach and expansion into video content. Number seven, vigilant free speech and anti-censorship radio. Number eight, democratic governance and shared decision-making among station workers in the community. Number nine, keeping listeners informed about governance matters. Number ten, restoring a democratic program council to make programming decisions. Number eleven, retaining independence from any privatized ownership. Number twelve, no commercial underwriting. Number thirteen, responsible budgeting and timely and transparent financial reporting to listeners. And number fourteen, keeping the Pacifica Foundation intact. I want to thank Valley Improvement Projects for hosting this event. It's very exciting for me personally. Some of my most meaningful experiences in my lifetime have involved being involved with my community, being involved with events that I've heard on KPFA, being involved in huge marches where you're part of the community. There's nothing like it, like that feeling of being part of something greater than yourself that's standing for things that are principled, that are standing for peace and freedom and justice. One example of my experiences with Modesto Cop Watch is campaigning for victims of police brutality and police murder, such as, for example, the Trevor Seaver case, and we were out here campaigning and protesting in downtown Modesto, in the Modesto area, and I would notice that there is mostly women that are there, family members. The same thing, I was at an event at the Antioch Police Station with Frank Sterling, and it was mostly women, and I've noticed that men of color, black and brown especially, are, they might be feeling more vulnerable and afraid to participate in these kinds of things, and I would find myself to be one of the few men there, definitely one of the few men that's not white. Trevor Seaver was killed by a Modesto police officer on December twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty, while unarmed and not resisting arrest. And there were some changes that came out of that, you know, if our host moderator, Tom, will make closing remarks, maybe he can kind of speak to some of that. Because being out in the community is, I think, very important, you know, and having events like this where we actually meet face-to-face, I think is very important. And I think our opposition has not organized these sorts of events, and it's just not happening, so I'm glad that we're doing this, and I just want to thank you, thank you for having us here.
Well, I'll just quickly say, because, yeah, I talked a lot about our environmental justice work, we do, you know, we put on our logo that we are a social and environmental justice organization, because police brutality and police oversight and accountability was another one of the main issues that we were founded around. You know, I mentioned the trash incinerator, but one of the other things we first did when we started was just ask people that we knew, which maybe because of our demographics were, you know, this was over ten years ago, younger people, people of color, and we would ask, you know, what are issues that you have in Modesto and Stanislaus County? And one thing that we heard from multiple people was, you know, when we go downtown on the weekend and we're going to bars and clubs and stuff, if we're standing around in a group for more than a few minutes, the police will drive up, they'll shine a flashlight on us and start asking, hey, where are you guys hanging out tonight? Where are you going after this? Are you from around here? Things like that. And so one of the first projects we did was the Cop Watch, but also just Know Your Rights. And we would, we made our own little Know Your Rights cards, and we would hand them out as we were cop-watching, and we would do Know Your Rights workshops, so that, you know, very basic things, and we would practice them too. For example, one of the first times we cop-watched, there was an officer talking to a group of young ladies, asking them where they were going, where they were parked and things like that, and we told them, "You don't have to answer those questions if you don't want to." And I'm sure it was just a coincidence of being sarcastic, but a little time later, the very same officer who we, you know, stopped those young ladies to talk to, approached us, asked us for our identification. We, out of principle, said, "We're not going to give you our identification, because we don't feel like we're doing anything wrong." They said, "No, you're loitering and blocking the sidewalk," because we were standing, doing Cop Watch. So wherever they were was where we were, and we would stand on the sidewalk, public property. So we got actually put in handcuffs, held there. I think, my personal opinion is that we were held there for over an hour, almost two hours, I think, this was a while ago, but I think they were, they wanted everybody out to see us get arrested, and to think that we got arrested and maybe went to jail that night to kind of dissuade anybody else from doing this cop-watching thing or letting people know about their rights. So after they held us for a while, they let us go with a ticket for loitering and obstructing a sidewalk. And when we went to court, it was immediately dropped by the judge, and, you know, and we made complaints to the police department, and our complaints, even though, you know, this happened to us, they, it was unfounded, our complaint, and we don't get to see the internal documents of how that investigation went, but basically got a letter saying that your complaint was not, you know, not justified or not founded, you know, to be true. That's also, you can look up Modesto Cop Watch on YouTube, and you can see some of the videos, videos of that when we got arrested, but not really, and some other videos. But, yeah, just wanted to talk about that. I wanted to thank everybody for reaching out, to ask to do this event here, kind of to go along, you know, with the disclaimer, it does say that I'm supposed to read the disclaimer at the beginning and the end of the event, but I will just say, as was already mentioned, this was open to all of the candidates. I, you know, depending on what Valley Improvement Projects' schedule is and the availability of our space, you know, we would be open to doing another one of these events. Like you said, other candidates were invited, they didn't make, you know, the trip over, but I wanted to, you know, make sure that Valley Improvement Projects, like everybody said here tonight, we want all voices to be heard, we shouldn't be afraid of dialogue. I myself personally am a big, you know, supporter of free speech and the First Amendment, so just wanted to make that clear. And we thought that there is definitely some overlap with the folks that support us, the community members we work with, and the programming that you would hear on KPFA, so I thought that that would, you know, it fit, it made sense for us to have an event like this. And again, just to make sure we're covering all the bases, all the views that you heard expressed by our speakers here, are those of the candidates, not of the radio station or Pacifica Foundation, and that the sponsorship of the debate by Valley Improvement Projects is not an endorsement by the sponsor, by us, or of any candidate. So that's the disclaimer once again. Thank you again for being here.